Call the meeting in order, everybody joins with the pledge. Motion made by both.
Second.
Second by second, all in favor. Six oh. Now just need a motion to approve the consent.
So moved.
Motion by Miller, second by both, all in favor.
I am staying from maybe that last copy tag you, because I don't have a computer. I don't know what the number is. I'm staying from trace number four, six, eight, oh, one. Four, six, eight, oh, one.
That's it, all in favor? Six oh, moving on, moving into reports. Superintendent's up first, Dr. Rob.
Okay, quick update, uh, we'll talk a little bit about, we'll talk about the budget later, but, uh, we got a lot of people here tonight, a lot of interested people, some people I've seen, uh, so people are probably calling, messaging on the phone, or I told you to talk to you directly. We've been asking a question, I want the board to be aware of this question, does the community wish to improve our sports complex? And if so, I would like to improve it. That's just a question, there's no bond issue at this point, there is no money spent on architectural fees, there are no official plans, we have Chris Davis with us from PWA, that's our district architect. We attended, or I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting and talked to some of the Chamber, they seemed interested, and then I followed up with TRA. They seem to run around with kids about as much as, uh, the teachers do on a regular basis and making all kinds of fun activities that have a wall. And, um, at this point, um, we're seeking, I let everyone I talked to know that the board is seeking input. The board would like to hear what the community would like to see and help us answer that question. And in my mind, the board is not here, the school district is not here, our employees are not here to force any issue, bond issue, tax levy, anything like that on our community. We don't force any, we give information, and the information is simply this, we have the bonding capacity, that's the borrowing capacity, to borrow between two and two point five million dollars, and have no increase to our tax levy. So right now, our tax levy is four oh one, a dollar eight of that pays our debt. Schools around the state, and I tried to get the data today from our, um, area supervisor, basically that data is, you know, districts all over the state, and that in twenty twenty, that's the latest one I had, I asked for twenty one, twenty two, but I had twenty twenty, seventy three school districts were running bond and tax levy increases. Seventy three. And out of that seventy three, there were eight that could not pass a bond or levy increase, mostly bonds. Almost all of them looked like there were no tax increase levies. So these are districts that say, hey, we need new roofs, hey, we'd like to build an ag facility, hey, we need new HVAC, hey, we need to upgrade our security, we need to take out this loan, no tax increase and pay for it. And out of that seventy three that ran in twenty twenty, unfortunately, we were in a minority. We were one of the eight school districts that said no. And you need fifty seven point one four percent of the vote to say yes. So I don't like being in that minority because everything we do, if we borrow money, if we bring money in from a grant, we have sixteen active grants right now. We're always chasing money, and we're only chasing it for one reason, for kids, for this community. Every bit of money that gets spent, whether you're spending it on a teacher, books, library, the superintendent, some people don't know, you actually have to have a superintendent. In the new Missouri School Improvement Plan guidelines that if you don't have it, you could lose your accreditation. So you have to have a superintendent, you have to have a principal, you have to have counselors, you have to have all these pieces in place to be a school. So it's all for kids. Now, some people may say, hey, just maintain what we have and don't do anything different. I can hear that, board can hear that. Some people may say, we want it to be a little better, we want to get more use out of the facilities, and if you look around, I think it's kind of unfortunate looking at the downtown area, I'm not blaming anybody, but it's crumbling, okay? It's kind of unfortunate looking at the pool across town, it seemed to be a lot of interest in trying to do something about it, but nobody did. And now I'm looking at, you know, what's in our Board of Education, we look at ourselves as a team, and saying, what's in our control here, what are we supposed to be good stewards of and make it great for kids? What are we supposed to do? Track's starting to crumble, football field probably needs a little work, starting to get a little flat on the top. If you walk across it, those of you who walk across, you probably agree some, kind of feels a little bit like a loonscape underneath there, and you kind of walk that a little bit. I walk across it almost every morning with my dog with the sprinklers on, huh? So, the question is, what do we want that place to look like? Because we have a little bit of bonding capacity, in fact enough, to actually take care of that football field and possibly the track, that's what the community wants. But it's not what Dr. Rob wants, it's not what this Board of Education wants, what does the community want? We don't pass bond issues, we set it up for you guys to be successful and have what you want. So if you're here tonight and have an opinion, I talked to Bob, he said he is a great orator, writing the same genre as Winston Churchill, so. But anyway, at any rate, so Bob, would you care to share a little bit about community perspective about this whole thing?
Um, you know, just being involved in community and many, uh, different groups and councils, uh, especially after the TRA meeting, seeing what the, you know, general proposal would be for possibly a football field and track. Um, you know, with where our school is located, uh, right there on the highway, when people want to move into communities, schools, top of the list, you know? A new football field would be a big boost to our, our perspective from out of town people and in town people. From TRA's perspective, um, you know, we, a turf field could have a lot of multi uses. Um, obviously, it's going to benefit the football team and the track team if, if a track's put in, it would benefit band, you know, they practice over at St. Andrews now, uh, because they don't want to damage the high school field. Um, so they're limited when it rains or if it's muddy, uh, with a turf field, that wouldn't be an issue. As long as I've lived here, which is my whole life, never been able to hold a track meet here, um, checking with mission standards, um, a six lane track, you can basically hold a full-fledged high school track meet. Uh, from my understanding, from what I've seen, we could get a six lane track in, um, full size, without doing any improvements to the stands, to the weight room, anything like that. You know, from just use of the field, um, the track, if, if, if proposed and moved forward, um, you could do dusted on lighting and we could get a lot of, you know, use for communities. Um, I know there's a lot of other towns that have nice tracks and they have, um, it open for people to walk on, use for the community benefit. Softball and baseball in the spring, when it's too wet to go on the field, instead of being in the gym, they could be on that, using that. So it, it, it would be used by a lot of different, um, sports teams, other extracurricular activities. Um, you know, I had a couple people that heard I was coming and brought up the Relay for Life that we used to hold. Every other year of California, I haven't held, because a lot of it has to do with the track conditions from what I've heard from the Relay for Life Committee, I'm not on that, but this is this is what I've been told, so possibly getting that back every other year. You know, from my yield here in a second, to my colleague on youth football, just so I don't take up all the time talking, but, um, yeah. You know, being a city council member as well, it would be a boost for our, our town. Um, and that's not, that's not an official city council position, that's just me and my opinion, but, um, from what I understand, if, if, if this does come to a vote, and it does pass by the community, we will still have some bonding capability for emergency things that could come up, so we wouldn't be, you know, tying ourselves to where we couldn't do something in the future if we had to. I think from ninety percent of the people I've talked to, they would like to at least see it come up for a vote and let the community decide. If it's something we want to improve on, great, if it's not, at least the community had their say. Garrett, you want to speak on the youth football?
Uh, yeah, just from a youth, uh, football standpoint, I think we've got some exciting things going on, um, a lot of support, we've heard from other people, so if we can continue that, sort of excited feeling in the community, th- this is one thing that would, would gain support. Uh, you mentioned California, when I drive by there, it's kind of, oh, okay. We've got all kinds of people moving in from different areas, and they're looking at, looking at schools, um, this would, this would help that. I just wanted to throw this out there, give a shout out to Mark Hampton with his golf youth program, what would you say, maybe fifty kids or so were involved in that? Well, we had our greens die off, right? So we had a group out of Chillicothe come in, receive those for a discounted price because we had a youth program set up. So kudos for him for doing that. But, that kind of shows what we've got going on here, um, so that would just continue to implement, um, our program. And you got a good program, you're going to have other peoples come in that could be potential donors to our community and our school as well.
One thing I did forget to add, sorry if you brought this up, um, you know, with our new high school coach, there's a lot of enthusiasm for football again. There's a lot of talent in, in the high school team, um, our junior high team just went undefeated, their numbers have grown over the past few years. We have sixty one kids out for youth football this year, which is the biggest number we've ever had, and I don't know how many years I've been doing it, but it's a lot. We have two undefeated teams, one team that's getting on track, but we're, you know, we're getting there, so we have a lot of, there's a lot of potential there, and I think, I think those kids deserve a top notch facility.
I think we've also got some, some people, um, my age that are maybe went out after college, different things, and they're moving back, so they're bringing those younger kids in too. Um, that's only going to help support our cause and everything we've got doing, moving forward, so we've got some, some younger blood, if you will, uh, just being supportive in the community. So if we show that, hey, uh, we came together and we're kind of backing that up for everybody that's in this town, uh, I think you're going to get some more people that are going to stay, and they're going to get some people that are going to continue to think it's, hey, let's move on then.
Is there anybody else who can share a perspective or?
I had a que, I mean, I had a question, I haven't seen the final architecture, but you're talking just the football field and the track. What about the concession stand and the bathroom area? Is there plans for that? The reason being is, is that I could only imagine if we sunk a million dollars, everybody comes to see it, and then they have to go use the rest rooms in the ones that we have.
I think those things start coming out, like as needs, and if we can do it on a budget, we do, like we fixed the playground, right? We did that, uh, it's a lease purchase, it's already paid for.
You have an opportunity, you have an opportunity where that says, that you could actually, if you did remove the bathrooms that you have right now, you could actually build a new building on top of that. Something that would be a new concession stand, new bathrooms, a place for a weight room and a locker room. You could actually have a training facility there that could actually accommodate all the sports, a place.
You're going to go to two point five and three point five real fast. I mean, if you're going to have a wish list, yeah, we can have a wish list as a community, but you know, it's kind of like remodeling a house, where do you stop?
We just built a Butler Building type of building for the city, over there at the TRA field, it was sixty thousand dollars. That's finished there.
Well, I think, oh, sorry.
I mean, that's just something, if that you all are considering making an improvements to there, it would be something to think about, this is supposedly in the planning stages.
It's good to think about that and see where the budget, I don't disagree at all. It's a little rough, right?
It's rough, and we have right now, you have our weight room that we have there at the school, people I see them standing outside in the winter time doing cleans. If we're talking about athletics, that is a, a strength training, that is an injury prevention mechanism. I would think that that would be something, that would be something to be considered.
So what I think would be best is if, instead of asking for a bond, to just rebuild and not showing the community exactly what will be done, so to show us what the plan is before we agree to borrow more money against ourselves. Does that make any sense? You know what I mean?
Yep, that's why the architect's sitting here now, because he wants to hear these kind of things.
Well, I, I, oh, that's, I got here a little late, what is the proposed cost of what you're saying about?
Chris.
Running spot. The track and, and the field, we've estimated at two oh one.
And have we, are we then set on a track and a field, have we just looked at what a field would be?
We talked about it.
How much is the maintenance on the grass if we took care of it?
Maintenance on the grass, I just ran that, it's somewhere around twenty thousand a year.
So that ain't very bad.
Cause, cause you got water.
That's what you pay now?
Yeah. I'd say on average, since I've been here.
So if we put like ten grand into that, then we can probably afford to first seed it and really take care of the grass there?
What, what grass, like if we had a turf field or?
No, the, the grass that we already have. So if we put ten more thousand dollars onto fertilizing and actually taking care of that grass, it would look a lot healthier than it does. So, I mean, that would be far less expensive than turf. Because what's the maintenance on turf?
The, the maintenance on turf is not near what it is on, on grass, you, you want to speak to that, Chris, because I'm not experienced.
Yeah, your routine is mainly a little bit of labor of re-spreting around the granules, maybe adding to some areas. It'll be ten years down the road, maybe twelve at most, where you'll have to replace the, the turf part of the system, not the whole crust profile of the drainage system and everything that's under it, but the actual carpet, so to speak, will wear out with time.
Dr. Rob?
Yeah.
And from my research from other towns, please correct me if I'm wrong, um, the cost to replace the field now, after it's installed, is about three hundred thousand.
Yeah, we, we've estimated that the carpet side, that's what it would be in ten years or so, hard for a thing on right now, but, but it's a good.
And we're spending approximately twenty to twenty-five a year, just maintaining what we have now. So basically, what we're spending, you can easily extrapolate that out, that we put the money back, what we didn't spend out of our budget. So, to me, the initial cost is going to come from doing the work and getting it in, and then after that, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be a push after that, because obviously, that cost could go up with the economy the way it is, but the cost to maintain it's going to go up just as much, I mean, if not more, so.
I think I'll ball back to this one, I asked Chris this, you know, if we, let's say, let's forecast ten, twelve years into the future, because I think, I get this question a lot. You know, what if the community can't afford the carpet? Is the turf a lot less? I, I think it is, you could probably use that same spot and pull out the turf and go to sod again, I guess, if you wanted to.
You could, you could probably return the ditch without too much trouble, you're going to have a good drainage system under it. I think the big, the big advantage on the turf is if the community needs the additional usage of the field, because there will be times, as, as was talked about, you could do baseball, practice on it, um, at certain times of the year, we probably couldn't do that on a, a natural turf field, so I think to the community, getting behind that extra spend will be, do you have that demand for more use on the facility? I mean, you know, you get two, three inches of rain, you know, one morning, an hour after it's done raining, you're using the field, but you're not using the football field right now with natural turf for a couple days, unless you're going to do damage to it. So those are, I think, the, the trigger point of going to an artificial situation versus natural. And so if the community doesn't need the additional space, you don't need band to be on it, you don't need baseball to be on it, you know, you don't need the, the PE side of it, all those sort of things, and all you really need is grass for football season, then status quo might bring out, so. If you guys have answers to that as a digital.
Can I just look at the, the turf we do have in the field now, which is at the playground? How much that gets used? And how much cleaner it made our building too? How much kids love it? I, I mean, I've never seen kids go excited, get so excited recess, but I certainly remember the mud hole that this board talked about that had been there over a decade, that no one had repaired, and it was just, you might as well have a fishing pond out there floating boats, you know? You get more use out of it, and you've got TRA, we've got the little kids, how you build a great football team, where you have good youth leagues, that, that's where it comes, it all feeds, so, yeah.
The, uh, the playground just got locked down, which probably needed to happen by trash and stuff like that. Let's say it's going to be hard to lock down the, the stadium, so do you know what the other schools do? I mean, is it open for anybody to come on whenever they want?
Yeah, some schools are open, some schools are not. We do have the kids' capabilities, since we've got live access out there, and have a camera, and both of those signs. Uh, we had some outdoor LED lighting that was gone to dust, so there's still some lighting there, it kind of attracts from people doing something crazy. I remember back in, when I was at Missouri State, and, and somebody decided to get one of the, the, I don't know what kind of machine it was, we went out there and ripped up all this new car- carpet that they had laid there, and, uh, some guys got in a lot of trouble for doing that, because they shouldn't have been doing that, and they ripped it up, millions of dollars of damage, but, you know, we would probably need to look at access and having the right security there. And, uh, the reason the playground's locked down now, because we, we've had several incidents there, so we need to kind of, we allow parents to use that, they just have to call the principal, let them know an adult's going to be there, and they can use it still.
I mean, some, some, some tracks, commercial tracks they'll allow, where you come into the school district and you pay like a five dollar, and it gives you a card that you're able to access.
Turnstile.
Yeah.
Well, I, I just don't want to see the community and the district spend that much money and then have it get messed up. And I'm sure they get messed up because a group of us volunteered to pay, to paint that field now, and I'm assuming it was during the JV Junior High Football Game, we have a twenty-five dollar jig that I personally made to paint landmarks, and some parents left their children unattended, and they stumped it into the ground and it's ruined. So, I mean, I don't, I don't want to see us spend this kind of money. I, I'm not opposed to track, I want track, I think track's awesome. I don't know why we want to spend the extra money just to have people in the community be able to walk around the track at night. And possibly carry.
No, it's more for the kids.
Would, um, if we have a six, a six lane track, would, we could, I know we can't do like district or a conference meet, but we.
Yeah, we haven't heard back on it officially, but.
You could actually, Tipton could.
Yeah, duels or try meets, or I think you can even do conference on six, I think it's recommended eight per district, so there might be a level where you might not be able to do it, but I think a lot of that depends on the unit management, and I think if there's a.
I mean, as far as from a city, uh, uh, track meets do bring a lot of, I mean, they bring a ton of revenue into a town, simply because of how many people will show up to those, I mean, you have, whenever you bring that many schools, track's actually something that would help out the city.
I like the turf field, another factor for spring baseball and softball, because we struggle with practices, because it rains so much. So everybody's like, well, try to use the turf field, well, it's getting used, or you're in the gym, it's just hard to get practices of, for all levels of kids. I mean, we, we, TRA, we have, you know, T-ball all the way to high school ball, there's nowhere to go, it rains, I mean, you're just, you're done. So I think that's a huge advantage to be able to get out there in the spring, be able to use it more than just fall sports.
And multiple teams could practice at the same time.
Exactly, it'd be big enough to, multiple teams practice.
And Chris also brought up something with bases that are used, one's, yeah, there are, there's bases that kind of have grips that can put down, so you can do quite a bit of practice.
It's not as big as baseball fields, you know, doing all your, your full length type stuff doesn't work, but, you know, certainly a lot of your throwing, your running, your basics, all those mechanics and things that in the spring you're trying to get the kids focused on makes a lot of sense, so, yeah, there's a lot of opportunity there. And dividing, you know, the facility's big enough dividing it into, to two halves, where you can run multiple, you know, youth leagues and, and different other activities out there is pretty common. We've, we've got school districts that soccer practices on one half, football practices on the other half, will go at, at the same time, and get the practices in, where then you don't have to schedule things till eight, nine o'clock at night, and you don't know how tough it gets with communities as you keep growing and growing, and youth sports and participation.
I think it'd be wide enough to run, or use soccer on a team in the spring sometimes too, it'd be a huge advantage, because running out and rescheduling is a nightmare.
What would be the next, like, for example, if you, I mean, I know that it, the cost to actually put something on the ballot's probably minimal. How much is, how much, what would be your next step if you all decided, I mean, how much would that cost if you all, as a board said, hey, we're going to put this on the, put this on the ballot, and you've got a, what's, what's the next cost for that? What's the?
They charge us after the election, based on how many people participate in the election, isn't that right, Leslie? And I get a different bill every time, I want to say it's in a few thousand dollar range or something like that. There are legal things that we have to do, we have to get the legal language together, so there's some lawyer fees that come into that, maybe a thousand. Um, Chris would have to start some plans, because I hear out here like, and I saw from the survey that we put out, we had, oh, about a hundred and seventy, let's see, I'm going to go back to this all. A lot of people are wanting to know, hey, what are we voting for exactly, which I totally get it, we had a hundred and seventy returns, that's faculty and staff, we put one on Facebook, and we also had one that went to parents. And about seventy-nine percent of those people were in favor of it, um, of improving that, uh, sports complex, and you know, the next step is, we start engaging the, uh, architect, sit down with Chris and say, hey, what do you think the fees are for this, to get the plans drawn up right? Did you want to share what Southern Boone did? I like that, that analogy of having good plans and why that's important, some cost savings that come up.
Sure, um, so there's, these types of facilities, there's a pretty particular, um, skill set and experience and tolerances for tracks and, and the levelness for the football facility and the drainage systems, so there's a couple companies in, in our area that, that team up and put tracks and turf fields together. And so our sets of plans will, will follow along and, and allow those three companies, could be other companies that, that come into the area, other trades and stuff, um, to competitively bid your facilities. We don't construct them, we just kind of try to get the, the pretty pictures down, the construction documents, the engineering documents, and get something out there for you, for you guys to bid. When you get that sort of, you know, competitive bidding side things, we, we save significant savings in other community projects. Right now, as, as Dr. Rob was talking about, we're working on it with Southern Boone Schools for a new track and, and artificial turf field there.
I'm already, I just said, I mean, I'm always kind of with Bob on that, that I'm a person that would say, just let it up to them, if they say yes, then they say yes, if they say no, you move on and you tackle their next project.
The board would probably have to pass.
But I didn't know if there, now, if there was like some astronomical number, you said, well, you know, hey, it's, it's going to cost us thirty thousand dollars just to even put this on the ballot, and let's, you know what I'm saying? Yeah.
But with his fees, it'd be quite a lot. I would say it could be something earlier, but it's not thirty thousand, I'll tell you that.
Hey, uh, Dr. Rob, how, how long will it take, let's say it passed, how long will it take for there to be, when you have a.
You want me to build that one here?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, like with Southern Boone, they passed theirs in April, we've been working with our engineers over the summer and fall to put, uh, the, the total track layout, the details together, all the scope of work, working, you know, where they need electrical outlets, data, stuff like that. We'll put it out to bid probably in, uh, November, December of this year, and then the teams will, that'll bid on it, we'll have everything ready to be working next summer, so. If you guys put the bond issue together, April twenty-three, it'll probably be the summer of twenty-four when the run to the work happens out there. Three, four months is.
If that's the case, the twenty-four is out for football.
It would happen in the summer.
Well, yeah, it would be completely by fall. You're not going to get it done in a month.
No, you'll, you'll start at mid-May, and you'll have it done by mid August.
What are you seeing in price volatility there? That's something we track, and that's an issue.
Yeah, that, that's.
Depending on how much room we have between, well, the biz is and, and the time, uh, that, that it's going to take to get this down.
Right, uh, most of these products, they're petroleum based, they have some petroleum added and stuff to them, and so as oil goes, these things go. But, uh, again, the, you know, we're, we're getting numbers, um, uh, for turf and for, uh, the, the track surfacing, you know, below that, the asphalt base, all that stuff for, for Southern Boone, and it's tracking with our numbers, and we use those. the low that's, the asphalt base, um, all that stuff for, for Southern Boone, and it's tracking with our numbers, and we use those numbers to kinda pass along to you guys as well, we can see. I think right now, overall, construction industry wise, I think the pricing pressures are reducing a little bit. And for you guys, it's not HVAC units and it's, and it's not a lot of copper, so those are some of the things, and it's not a lot of lumber or steel, so the volatility of these components, I don't think is quite there, as there isn't a lot of commercial construction.
Chris, you mentioned the asphalt base and
Yes.
we know our tracks in terrible, uh, repairable condition. Is the asphalt base that we have, is any of that, can you utilize it?
Uh, not effectively, it's not set up for four hundred meter, so if you wanted a true four hundred meter track, uh, the footprint's a little bigger.
You said it's junk, right? I mean, the track can't be.
Yeah, I haven't evaluated it myself, but I, I think.
I thought they said it can't be sealed no more, right?
It can't seal it.
That's what it. Yeah, it's, it's done its life.
I'll be damned if I want to dump a million dollars on top of it. Yeah, I can't walk on it now, huh?
Yeah, true.
Now, and the drainage under asphalt is one of our key things in this area with our freeze thaw and how much, you know, we run through the four seasons here, so. Getting a good drainage base under it, getting a good drainage round, it's water, it's not sitting next to it, that would be what we set up, because, you know, quality of the asphalt will, will set how long your synthetic, you know, surface lasts and how well it's formed.
So you're demoing, uh, existing track?
Yeah, you script that, well, and, yeah, and.
None of the grades are driving any.
And, you know, and the.
Right, but it's an existing cost, right, to demo it, that's what we get there.
Yeah, it's all part of the free, you know, all part of our number. And to get the drainage profile, you can take close to twenty-four inches of your soil profile out, so there's, uh, there's a lot of.
On the set of those track, I guess you're gonna have way longer straight drains than normal? You get a regular track?
Uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it'd be any longer than if you come home. You know, it'll be close to an equidistant track, so you have about a hundred meters on your straights, hundreds on your curves. We don't have the, the width north to south, uh, between your light holes and some of your right away and your stands to do more, you know, a wider track that allows a bigger soccer field, we pretty much got a football field that fits in with our asphalt.
Could that possibly be thought of as like a phase two, is actually doing the track for district track meets and stuff? If we were to help football field now, and then the track, so that we could host any track meet we wanted?
I think it'd be more cost effective just to do it all in one shot.
And, and Chris, you're concerned about construction cost? Um, I write construction bonds, and I will agree with what he said. I, I've seen a lot of leveling off of the RFPs that I'm getting in for larger construction products, projects. I think the supply issues are easing a little bit, um, you know, o- obviously, you can't forecast that to a depth, but just a trend I've, trend I've seen from two thousand twenty to, you know, I just recently wrote a bond for a twenty-six million dollar project. Um, and, you know, the, the contractor's very confident that, um, his pricing will, you know, it's not gonna start for three months, but he's, you know, obviously, there's gonna be some increase, but it's all within the, uh, tolerance level that bonding companies look for, so, you know, just to kinda echo his statement, I think we've maybe plateaued a little bit from, from two thousand twenty, but. Yeah, yes, and, you know, that's.
The track's not completely turf either, it's just asphalt. It'll have a synthetic, uh, system on the top of it, so it'll be a, probably a close to ten, twelve mil profile of SCR. And probably four year of A would be medium, and then it's a nice quality, high school track.
So the bond would absolutely cover it, there's a.
We don't know until it gets bid, but right now, what Chris is seeing, it's within our reach.
Uh, what have we got, what are we taking a bid on, just the field and the track, or like the site plans around it too?
Chris would write those, the RFP for us, basically, which are the specifications we're looking for, and if you were on the steering committee, you'd say what you wanted to see, what color you wanted to be, you know?
No, I just mean like the drainage and stuff for the field, the site plans, like where the water's gonna run off.
Yeah, all, all of that would be part of it.
Yeah.
If the project goes over budget again, where's that?
We won't be able to do it if it goes over budget.
Yeah, I think we get the bids in, and if they were that way, we have to talk about some value engineering ideas. And we feel real hard pressure, the budget's real tight, you know, there's a step down of the quality for the track surface that we can do, that can be as much as a hundred thousand less than the other surface. We could look at bidding all, whatever, something like that, so we have pricing just in case, so we keep the, the base of the project, you know, as, as secure as possible. You know, you, you could, if you really get the pressures, you know, just leave it, get the asphalt in, maybe the surface comes in a year or two, after that is a possibility, so there's opportunities there.
Well, well, that's the way to speak, you know, not, no projects ever on budget. I mean, we just had a, how many change orders did you all have with your HVAC?
We didn't have any change orders from the, the, the basic beginning. The, uh, the problem we ran into is when all of the equipment went up exponentially. And when all this craziness happened with the inflation and everything else, and all of a sudden they came back to us and said, look, this is what the equipment costs.
Well, but I mean, like your secure entry lock, there was a change order on that.
That's correct, because we want it done right.
Well, I, I mean, I get that, I want everything done right too, but I'm just saying realistically, you could say it's two point two, but it, are you gonna hit that? I mean, I don't, I, I don't think everybody.
You don't know unless we try.
Well, and I'm all for that too, I'm just saying, I don't, I've never seen a project come in on budget, ever.
And you definitely never have seen a project coming in on an exact number, let's say that.
Could it be lower?
Could be lower, yeah. Our projects, we, we always ask the, the clients to carry contingency construction, cover change orders, that's all part of the project budget, so.
It seems like if we've got the support, then the step is to get the bids and see what we've got, and really how much things would cost and have those itemized out. I mean, I, I could, I don't know how much a track would cost in addition to football field, but it seems strange to me to not do both at the same time. To me, I mean, at some point in time, someone put in a basketball court in an elementary school that we can't use. And I don't wanna sit here twenty years from now thinking that we made the same kind of call.
Well, that's.
What would have to be done, make it as safe like, I mean, it's really possible, why is squeezing it in there?
Probably have to move the stands. And the sad part is, you don't have to move them very far, you know, probably thirty feet or something.
That was kinda my, my thought. It's a small footprint, I mean, you're not moving the highway, you're not moving the hill, you're not moving the stand, so.
Is it, is it gonna be crammed in there and look, look funny?
I'm not sure, I use the term funny, it's pretty static. Um, I, I think it fits, um, I would consider that anyone would probably say or notice anything all that different from it. Um, you've got some, you know, a little bit of, um, room between the stands and between the light stands, so.
I think, Chris, is there, I mean, is there, that's not off the table reposition though, right? I mean, we, I mean, I know there's a hill there, I know we have a building there we can tear down.
I think, I think the budget would be your biggest thing on, moving stands, moving buildings, you know, I think that's when the million, million and five more come in.
Well, I know it's RFP, well, how much more would it be to move the stand if you get anything correct?
Uh, well, and then they make tracks, it'll cut the cost too, because we got more material, so. I, I mean, it would probably be moving the building that we were talking about. Yeah, it's, it's a pretty good number.
Because you have to move all the structures that are there, not just the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not just the stands, you have to do locker rooms, the lights that are there.
Gets a little tighter to be able to accomplish that in that, you know, three month period as well, so.
Yeah, one thing, uh, once again, I think you probably know more, a little research I did on this, I believe, is it Columbia Hickman has a six lane track?
They do have a six line oval.
Okay.
And they have an eight lane straight. They have a six line oval.
So, I mean, we're, I think we, I don't think we need to trip up on can we host districts? A six lane track, you, and I've checked the MISH's guidelines, it does not say you cannot hold districts on a six lane track. They would probably never award, let's, let's be honest. I don't think we're trying to get district track. I think we need to benefit our track, if we're gonna have a track program, we should give the track team the ability to compete on the same level with other schools. And a six lane track that's regulation gives our kids, I mean, look at me, I'm not a track person, so. I mean, for me to defend track is, but what I'm saying, it's, it's just like any other sport you have, you need to give your kids the best opportunity to compete as that sport.
Well, I, I agree with that kind of intent, but up until last year, the wrestling team was practicing in the lunchroom.
But I think we've made steps to improve that.
Well, we have.
Okay, and this would be a step to improve the track program.
I, I'm just saying.
You know, I, I, I think if you look at, if you're, if, if we wanna do this for the betterment of the community, we should look at it, I don't think you wanna piecemeal it. And the elementary gym is a brilliant example, um, and that was obviously not in this board, you know, that, just something that happened. But when you piecemeal it, you might have a harder time getting support for that. Um, and I don't know, the savings of not doing a track and trying to do one later would benefit the district that much in my opinion. But, you know, I, I think if, if we're gonna do it for the betterment of our kids, we need to do what's to the benefit of the major, of the most kids possible.
I'm in support of this whole complex, but we're bringing people in and we still have the same concession stand and bathroom facility. Are those, can those accommodate what we're wanting to bring in with the new complex?
I mean, that, that, that's the same, I mean, cause I'm telling you, that'll be the first thing, that'd be the first thing that I said, that's why, whenever, I mean, I travel around and every gas station, that, that's what you think, that's what they advertise, we've got the cleanest restrooms, the reason being is, is because that's where you go and it gives you the taint of what the whole place feels like. And it is embar- I mean, when you talk about, you know, if somebody around town, if they wanna leave their yard the way they leave it, you know, that, ultimately, that's a reflection on them. But when you talk about public property like school property, or what you says at the city, at the park, that's a reflection upon every person that lives here. When somebody walks into our restroom, they're at the football field, is that reflective of any person here that I know? I, I don't think it's reflective of any of us.
I think we did have a pretty good project with TRA field for minimal cost, and it looks really nice, so I think there is options. Maybe we could budget, fundraise that amount.
Five, six schools here with many kids are gonna have, and parents, you know, facilities, bathroom facility is gonna be a little bit of a problem. You know, you got two schools here during football game, it's, there's a little bit of a line, but it, it would be something to consider to see where, put inside a budget.
Realistically speaking, if you have six schools here including Tipton, where are you gonna park everybody? I, 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 I'm not against track either, I think track's fine, I'm just spitballing it out there, if you have a s- six meet, or sixteen track meets.
Park them up, park them up there to more lock property, up into grass.
Park where?
Up into grass.
Yeah.
I mean, I would pick my son up from track last year at Smithon, and I guarantee we have as much parking levels as Smithon does in the old track. So, I mean, we have the hill, you have the lock property, you have.
Street park.
Smithon is six or seven.
Parks?
What size of track they got?
I, you know, I just picked my son up, but I don't.
I think the parents will figure out how to get their kids to the track meet, if that's what they're, they'll figure that out.
Any other comments from, from the group guys, I really, really, really appreciate the fact that you guys gave them. I mean, it helps the board, maybe the city, just have meaningful discussions, and I, I've never seen this board say, we're just gonna do what we want to, we don't care what the community says. They're, they're wanting to hear from you guys, and you know, anytime you guys wanna come to a meeting, please do. And we've got a couple of seats that are gonna open up, you don't have to raise your hands ones that are going off, but we always need good feedback on the service of this board and this community. This is not Dr. Rob's project, it's the community's project, I live here with you, I pay the same taxes. I'm just still asking the questions, it's what the community wants to do, so, um, just wrapping it all up, any comments from any of the board members, or anything you guys heard, anything you wanna add?
I do have a question on how the bond is actually currently working, so I've read a little bit, like, so much money per, so much property tax, and so I'm curious of what that is and then when's the bond actually run out? Cause I think everybody's.
Twenty forty-two.
When is it?
Twenty forty-two.
Okay, so there's a big, misconception is, oh, if this don't pass, everybody's gonna get more money.
No.
So I think people, I mean, they think they're, they think that, so I think we need to
Yeah.
tell them that you're not gonna get, you're not gonna pay less taxes, guys.
It's gonna go out longer, it's gonna pay a longer.
So.
Like you're proposing a no, no tax increase also, is correct, I mean, it's not.
It won't be an increase, it'll just be long.
It's just, you've extended it.
Yeah.
You're extending it.
Two thousand forty-two.
So, I have a question, so the, the current bond goes through twenty forty-two if we do nothing? What are obligations on?
Our current bond will go through twenty forty-two.
Okay, so if we.
At some point, we start to leave the money, and we, if we really push it, we might be able to pay off our current lines five years early. That's what I talked to our financial advisor, he said you might be able to pay off about five years early. But based on what we're bringing in with a one percent increase to assess valuation, okay? And what we're bringing in as a community, and what, what growth has looked like, it's been pretty flat, it'd be one to three percent is what we're seeing. A dollar eight of your four oh one that you pay for your tax levy, that's our tax levy, a dollar eight of that is paying for these projects. That we've got, Ag Center, the roofs, the HVAC, the security, things that the district can't afford. That's what the dollar eight pays for, we can't afford this, what he's got here on the board, we can't afford it. But the community can, if they decide to maintain that dollar eight and say, you know what, this is a project we wanna see the district do. So if you maintain it, okay, we're gonna be paying on this till twenty forty-two, but as we're paying it, it starts to ebb down, okay, cause we start to pay it off again. And you say, okay, what's the next thing that needs to be addressed? All of our needs have been addressed, the roofs are in good shape, probably looking at close to ten years on them, I've had them assessed twice, Chris was one of the ones on a roof with me looking them over. Um, we've taken care of the HVAC, that's another twenty years roughly. Um, we've got good security, windows have been replaced, we got tenting on the windows even. We got some security features on those windows, so they can't be busted out, we got deadbolt locks in every classroom. We've got all the wifi that's running, we've got CAT six E cable that runs through everything, we got wifi hubs, which we can do on a br- budget, those are gonna come up in March, and I've already budgeted for them for money that we have, and we got E-rate and other grants to claim. So I'm not seeing any huge, big piece that we need to deal with within the next eight to ten year years, but by the time we get there, guys, we, we've paid it down again. See, so maybe we need to fix a half million dollars of roofs, well, half million dollar roof fix, we probably can't afford that, we might do a bond issue. It won't be me, it probably won't be these people sitting here unless they decide to stay a long time. But there are always maintenance issues to do to a school district when you're not rich, if you're not Ladoo or something, okay? You know, this is how school districts all over the state take care of stuff, or build nice stuff for kids, is what they do. So I don't know if that answered your question, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's good.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to make it simple, it's like, it's gotta be simple for me, just to be honest.
People aren't getting a refund if the bond's.
What's that?
People think they're like getting a, a tax break.
No.
I think for capital improvements, we've gotta run, have bond issues, because we don't collect enough in taxes outside of those. So if we were never to pass a bond issue, at some point in time, it's not like the taxes go away. I think, at least the way I understand it, I think taxes could likely go up, because, I mean, obviously, the needs don't ever go away, I mean, we gotta have a roof. And I, you know, you look at last year, we have to have an HVAC system, and in the, today's world, we have to have security. And when you look about, you know, the liability, all that stuff goes along with that. So, those are basic needs that have to be met, that we couldn't meet without, without, outside of the bonding, outside of the bonding capacity.
And this particular project is the bigger, what you guys were talking about, and I heard a lot of, the bigger vision of where's Tipton going? We're just gonna kinda let it just kinda limp along, or we're gonna build something that attracts some people here, good families. I'll give you a couple of examples, look at Dexter, I'll send a, a link out, or I'll probably put it on Facebook, take a look at what they've done with their school district, we got about twenty-four hundred kids. Their campus looks a lot like ours, they've been passing bond issues to fix things and make it nice, and have a turf field, and have a nice classroom space, and a, and a, a theater and all kinds of stuff, and they don't look much bigger than we, we do. Down southeast, east Missouri. down southeast, east Missouri. And, you know, I, I guess I just wanna say, I'm asking the question because I love Tipton. I've loved it since I've come here and, and I'm not going anywhere. So, if you guys wanna see something good happen, this board will do it with you. I'll do it with you, but here's, here's the call, okay? You guys sitting here, we need six hundred and fifty votes roughly to say yes to pass this thing. Look around. About twenty-two people have walked in around. We need about six hundred and fifty people to say, yes, we wanna do this for our kids or it just falls flat again.
How many votes did you get, did we get last time on the?
Take, I, I looked it back to the last few. It takes about six hundred and fifty to get fifty, about sixty percent is what you're looking at. That, that's the round number. I don't have it right here in my head, but I looked at it. I don't even give me a little bit of room to get about sixty percent. That's what you need. You have a question here?
I'm just thinking about, you know, if you have the, the bond cover the state of the field and the track, um, have you looked at or considered other ways to get funds for the additional projects?
We did.
So, you know, I work for a company that, that they take or they're out on the street, beating the street for donations. So, you know, you have buildings named after people, stadiums named after people. Um, is that an option to get out there and find someone who, you know?
Who knows? I'm sure the board would accept any donation.
Not kidding. But it happens.
We don't have a full-time grant person that goes out and solicit those, no.
So.
Get a lot to cross our path that we go get a bucket and dip our, our share out of, but not someone that full-time does that. But there is a big donor in, in town. There's a few famous people at Tipton. I was looking on Wikipedia last night. I'm sure the board would consider, you know, a certain level of donation that the deal might be named. I don't know.
That'd be a big number for that.
Anyway, uh, thank you, guys. Any other comments from the board? Thank you all for participating and we're gonna continue on with our meeting. We appreciate it. All right, sorry. Chris, do you have anything else you wanna say?
No, I'll, I'll leave these.
Yep. I provided a budget summary to you guys. I think it ended up being about nine pages long. It's probably longer than one of the read, but I tried to give you everything that you might wanna know. Um, that's just our money coming in, several pages. Short version, we're budgeted for approximately forty percent fund balance, uh, for this school year. Uh, hoping to end right at that amount at the end of the school year. So, by, right about where we are at the end of this year, because of a lot of federal money coming in, we're gonna be at about in the same spot.
Push the button on the right.
Oh.
And, um, it will be very interesting how the state decides to handle the thirty-eight K increase to teachers. Um, we need a stable flow of funds coming from the state to maintain that and a commitment from the state. Uh, not a year-to-year Band-Aid that is approved on June twenty-ninth, right just prior to our fiscal year, um, that may or may not be approved or signed by the governor, just came from a meeting at the West Central Superintendent's Association meeting today. And there's some conversations happening at the state. They formed a blue ribbon commission of a, a mix of educators and business people, um, that they are advocating or at least hinting or strongly suggesting, um, a recommendation that the thirty-eight K base salary becomes law. So, basically, a school district would have to pay that. It required to by law, statutory requirement. Right now, the statutory requirement is twenty-five K. And it's been around for, well, at least a decade or more, I think. Um, but they're also saying the second part, all the legislators going, oh, yeah, we're gonna vote for that. And they're saying, but, but fully funded. That's the second part. That's the catch. So, you might hear a lot of legislators, yes, I fully support a thirty-eight K base salary for teachers and then go off and do their thing and not think about, hey, it's act, it actually has to be in the budget somehow, some way. That money has to come in. And right now, they've had the special session under the general assembly and all they're talking about is what? Tax cuts. So, find out about how many different ways they can cut, cut taxes, which is probably not only what you wanna do if you're gonna add a big budget line item like that. So, um, hopefully, our legislators don't miss that part. Um, the only way our district could hope to do something like that would be to ask, uh, the state leaves us hanging the, you know, holding the bag and saying, hey, you're just gonna have to do it. Well, we'd have to ask for a local levy increase to do that. They have to say, hey, um, we can't pay teachers and we need to pass it by simple majority. Or we have to do massive cuts to be able to do it. We're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars more in our budget to do that. Um, okay, so that's, that's a bad side. Uh, we will have some small projects that I've budgeted for. Um, we've got our wifi that will begin, uh, sixty hotspots that we're gonna have to replace that, that RFP. I'm working on that, um, with Ryan Keel from Midwest. We're gonna push that out and see invites on that one. Um, those are all going off. What, what do they call that plant? Subscription? Do they sell anything on subscription?
Yeah, they're things subscription.
Yeah, so it's like a chrome book. It goes out four or five years, you know, now the wifi hubs that are up there and the ceiling go out.
Google Chrome Street, right?
Yeah.
For now.
Right. The grad, I'm talking to Ms. Metter about a graduation stage. Um, I've gotten some feedback from all you guys. Say, let's make that look a little nicer. We'll probably use it for other things too.
Waiting for my last bid to come in.
She is hunt, hunting them down for us. Cause I said, Ms. Metter, what do you want? I don't want to do Dr. Rob's stage. I want you to post pepper and maybe some of the teachers work together and figure that out. Make it look nice. Dr. Rob said, is what I think, and the board will say, we like it too. So, there you go. Teacher computers. We're gonna place about ten of those. Now, we're starting to cycle some of those out. They're getting a little old. Um, then we have our water mitigation project. Um, I've got the, um, bid that, um, Moon Construction gave me and we're not quite, I, I think, based on the amount that he's proposing, which was, I'm not gonna say it publicly, but he was working through GRP and then finally just told GRP, I'm done dealing with you guys and we'll deal with it. So, we'll put a bid out to see what kind of, uh, I, in my mind, let's let other people look at it and give us an idea of what would mitigate that water effectively. I, I think we can do it. I think a lot of people could probably do it. But we also have two big construction guys on our board that, um, could give us a look at it too and tell us what they think. So, I think that's important to hear everybody's voice at the table and how much we wanna plunk into that, that, that mitigation strategy. Oh, we might have to get some new cafeteria trays. I just found out about today. So, I don't know what those are gonna cost again. So, we're running out of trays. They're kinda breaking down. So, that's what they told me today. Those are some side projects that are coming up. Um, any questions on maybe what you read or what I provided you guys, anything else you'd like to know or maybe I don't know, but I can dig for? Send me an email or you can ask me now. I'll take notes.
Oh, I do have a question. Sir, what are, are we saving that white fence that Budland made that shut?
Saber is supposed to start hacking that off. I mean, put it back in. I had to get an auger for the, uh, for the tractor, which you just recently started using to put that fence around the, uh, the football field instead of the PVC pipe with the, with the, with the iron and so we put all those in first and he's gonna go start working on that too and put it back in. So, he's sitting up there looking at it, I believe, right now. I agree.
I was just curious.
Yeah, it's going back. He has to be able to dig those holes. So, he's, we've plus up the tractor a little bit so it could do even more with some attachments. So, we don't have to pay somebody to do everything all the time. Okay, Sam?
So, I got.
Okay, that's my report. The administrators.
Anybody have anything for Ms. Nancy or Ms. Leahy? Is there anything you all would like to share?
Yes. On mine, I would like to share, um, our academic intervention. If you looked at that part, I tried to highlight it in there for you. Uh, we, from this time last year to now, if you do that comparison, um, we have decreased number of students who are on that F list um, by fifty-six percent in the middle school and by seventy-five, actually seventy-six, cuz I ran the numbers right before I came over here again. And the high school, um, just, I gave you all some statistical numbers in there for you to see. Um, so, when I ran it, it wasn't five sheets. It was one front and back and I think I did the happy dance in the office. So, very, very pleased with that. Um, the other piece is Jenny Clutter, um, came in and donated some items for our middle school that were, had to do with hygiene. So, that was real nice. We appreciated that. And then the, uh, group that's in the Project Accelerators class, they're working on a project to put coats in the community. Um, and so they were my team that went out and took care of the hygiene. It was four young men and, or three young men and they took care of giving out the hygiene products to the boys and there was a female in there and she gave those out to the girls and it's really nice of them to donate that and said she would continue to bring things back to us. Um, morning tardies are way down. Nobody likes doing lunch detention. Um, so that's a good thing. And, uh, I just think things are, the things are going real well and looking much like school used to. If I can just get them to go back to standing by their lockers. They don't, they don't know how to do that because the freshman class came in and they did that for a little bit and then they didn't do that anymore. So, nobody stands in the hallways anymore like we always do. That's a little different. I did include the school fight song in there for you guys to look at and the school song because the class of, not, uh, the fifty-year classroom union seventy-two came in and they were looking for that and we looked through your books trying to find it and we finally found it and I thought it probably needs to be documented somewhere. So, we have it, but, so there it is. I don't have fun facts, but I have digital.
Yes, I was glad to see that. I wanted to tell you, uh, Leanne, you remember years ago, we looked at the junior high and there were forty-three students out of junior high getting Fs and Ds.
And that's only when it was a seven and eight.
Yes, and we had worked and worked and worked to eliminate that.
Yep.
I think we can see that today. So, thank you.
I'm very pleased with Ms. Melton. She has been an immense addition to our school, immense. She, there's lots of things that she does during the school day that for the last three years, we've been trying to do after the school day and she's taking care of a lot of things during the day. And I know we're still gonna have, we're getting to that point where we're still gonna have some after-school interventions that have to be assigned. Ms. Thomas helps with that as well one day. Um, but really, we're, we're all the same, same practices, same plan. I know you'll understand that, Patsy, where everybody's in the building is doing the same thing, the same expectations, which is nice.
I almost figured sort of again, but I just couldn't believe it.
Yeah, we're very, very pleased. That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Nancy?
Well, I have. Our, uh, Special Olympic Football Team is gonna be playing Friday at the Special Olympic Center in Jeff City. So, if you wanna have fun, come on down. Nine to two.
That's a unified team.
Our unified team.
You are explaining the Olympic unified team.
Um, it's awesome. It's absolutely awesome. It is really good. Um, it is, uh, we actually have a leisure skills class that is a class that, that high school age students sign up for for credit. And that class is, is half of the class is the students with special needs and the other part of the class are the typical peers. And so they work together and they use the Special Olympic curriculum for the sports, uh, for what they're learning how to do and learn to practice. And they've got a football team. They're, they, uh, they're gonna be doing basketball. We're actually gonna play, we got invited to play at Westminster on the court at Westminster at a, at a halftime game. So, uh, but lots of exciting things along that line. And what happens with the, um, the classes all together, they do activities all together and at the very end of the class, they break up into two parts. And, uh, Anna takes some of the students and works with them on disability awareness and, and, you know, what did you see? What did you, what questions do you have? And Mr. Cooper then works with the, the students over here and talks to them about, you know, what they got out of the, the class today. So.
I think the phenomenal piece of it is when they do the, the awareness part, uh, with the high school students of what they really have to say and to say about things is, is very eye-opening. They, their, their eyes are.
They're idiots.
They're, they get it. They get it. And they really have become, um, stronger leaders. They're better leaders.
So, are you going to Jeff City then?
Oh, of course.
She can pump stuff. Are you going? Well, she needs to be able to pump stuff out on.
Oh, I send it to, I send it to Roxanne and Roxanne gets my stuff out. So, we'll have pictures.
Yeah.
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 Just let me know she's doing that text because I'll be a little there doing that, channel thirteen.
Because I'll be at work, but now that I know what's going on, it's like, all right, I'll check it here.
Oh, yeah, we'll have, we'll have pictures.
Yeah.
So. One of the other things is the mentoring that you, that we've had kids, we've got some kids, some high school kids that are mentoring. To them, that's, it's just good. It's really good.
Okay, let's do this.
One question about that. Right now, there's no scheduled events at Tipton, correct? But that's a goal?
That is something that we are gonna work towards doing, yes. So.
I think that would be great.
That would be awesome. Yeah, I agree. Okay, moving on here. We've got new business.
New business. Um, Chris here tonight. He has done these preliminary drawings for us for free. Um, he did discuss, um, what it would cost to get him started on plans. You guys wanna discuss that and whether you wanna do that now, later, what you're about to do. Timeline would kinda look like. I know the community's come in here pretty strong tonight. You've got some survey data there to look at. I think that's kinda your homework. You haven't read through that yet on how you feel about it. Um, I'm not here to respond to this issue. I'm not here for a project. But if this board wants to see this on the ballot, I need to know because I think the sooner we get a lot of these details that we heard out in the audience kinda shored up and get a steering committee together and know what everybody wants and pump it out, April comes quick. And, um, my concern is that if we wait too long, um, a lot of questions will remain unanswered because the architect isn't engaged other than that picture over there on the wall and a lot of even the people that support us not having their questions answered. So, he told me approximately ten thousand dollars to get the plans done for this and I had to dig with him a little bit to make sure that's his solid price. He is our district architect. If you guys don't wanna do that, just tell him. Say, not feeling it, but it's a big decision.
Is there a reason we can't wait?
You can wait. My only concern is you got a lot of questions out here in the audience about what it's gonna look like, where it's gonna be, how, what part of the hill is gonna get cut out and, you know, what's it gonna look like once they?
Well, I mean, they can wait.
They can wait. What, what changes have been, I mean, what's changed since he originally did it?
He's never originally done that.
Well, he's drawn some concept out.
Not that.
So.
But where did those on that wall come from? All that came?
That's, uh, that's actually from GRP and their subsidiaries. I got that one for free.
But I mean, yes, they're, I mean, I mean, the community's gonna have a lot of questions. I mean, we're gonna have questions. So, I don't know. I would just hate to spend that kinda money. I mean, if you don't even know the bond's gonna pass, then you're out tendering. Yes, you still have the plans. Away in the safe. I get it. But in reality, what are you gonna do?
I think it's gonna be really hard for us to know whether or not the bond, the bond's gonna pass. I, I just, I mean, I was certain the bond's gonna pass a couple of times before it did.
I don't think it will pass.
Um, I, I just, I, I think for us, what we have to decide is, is do we want to run it? And if we're, if we wanna run it, we're gonna. And if we're, if we wanna run it, we're gonna have to spend the money to get the plans.
We're gonna have to fully bond as much money as we can, cause I don't think two point five million gets it.
Well, I mean, a question I have, if you could, if that's what you, if that's your end goal, but you're not gonna address the lighting? You're maybe just-
Football lighting.
The football field lighting? I mean, if you're gonna put in a nice field and track like that, why would you not switch your lighting over to LED?
We just have to see what the budget would actually allow us to do. I think, uh, Matt DeLeo told me we could get probably up to two point five by the time we actually get the bonds.
And he just said two point five and was leaving stuff out, so if you get two point five, you're not gonna be able to do everything you wanna do. I mean, you just well tell them right now, it's a field and a track, maybe. No, no concession stand, no lights.
Restroom.
Restroom staying the same. I mean, you can probably say that without plans.
I, I think that you would have to say, this is, uh, this is our, these are what we're, this is what we're gonna do, and if somehow things free and, well, and get other things done, then we would consider those as secondary items. Well, I mean, even if it's just secondary, I, I don't, my concern is, oil production's getting ready to go down, they're pulling back.
Yeah.
Um, and so oil's gonna go back up.
It's already climbing.
But who knows by the time they get that done, what hap- I mean, some of that's gonna depend on what happens over Russia.
Or the water reserves.
I, I think that's one thing that folks don't completely understand. You know, you pass something for a certain amount, but then there's, you know, it's a year and a half before you can start doing it, or a year.
Yeah.
And things change, and you just can't, now, now you're in trouble, because you gotta, you don't have the money to do exactly what you wanna do.
I mean, that's what we dealt with in this project.
I think it just, I, I would like to ha- I would like to pursue it, I think, at least have the information, but my concern is it's so tight on between what it's gonna cost and what we can bond, that's the only concern that I have. Is that we end up running up against that, the price issue.
Well, I know, when we re-got it California and recabled it all, they passed that bond issue, and I think at that time, their facility was three million. How many years ago was that?
Check what's going on. Tipton Youth when they were, when they-
Yeah, it was Tipton Youth Day, when my kids were-
Yeah, so that's-
So, when he says two point five million, I'm thinking four point five. To do, I mean, if you're talking any, you, you might get a track and a field, but no- nothing else. Just, I mean, that's kinda what he was saying there. He wasn't saying lights, he wasn't saying new concession.
Yeah, I was wondering how he gets his bids, I mean, obviously, there's different types of software you can use, but there's probably only a handful of people that actually do this work. And it's all gonna be built, I think, or partial supply and demand then, at the time that people are ready to actually get the stuff done.
Here's what I would do, MSBA is in November, it's a month away. There's going to be at least one, probably two or three turf companies there. I would just point blank walk up to them and say-
Yeah, we did.
I mean, cause I've asked them that question, and they're gonna tell ya, you're looking at at least three million dollars. So regardless of him drawing up a ten thousand dollar plan, if they tell you it's three million dollars, and you can only bond two point five, like Craig said, don't matter how fancy your plan is. You know, that's my take on it.
I think if we're able to get good information, a ballpark like that, it seems we're a little close enough to that meeting, if we're able to get it, then it makes sense to ask that question.
Now, if you walk out there and they say, I have no idea, then maybe we're back to a ten thousand dollar-
Well, sometimes what they do is, I tell them, hey, we wanna build this, come down and look at our site, give me a, give me an estimate, tell them what you think.
That may be the way to go, I mean, just because it'd be-
Now, he, now, Chris has four or five companies, if he's working with regularly, that's what he told me. In those four or five companies, he's got, they're, they're all competitive with each other. So his reading on it, that's about what it's gonna cost us, based on the costs he's seeing now. Cause he's currently finishing up a project at Southern Blue, and they're putting a lot of bells and whistles on theirs, so it's not two and a half million.
Can't look, they can't.
What's that?
It's that they look, they can't.
Yeah.
I mean, everything that they've done there in the last two years.
Yeah, but part of it means, part of it is about what kind of bells and whistles they're actually putting on. I mean, if some of those bells and whistles are required, are, are needed to be there to make it look like it's worth it, then that becomes a problem. I mean, if it's just, I, I, I pers- I would think that we're not quoting this amount, thinking it's just like the economy scale type version of what this would, or the con- the economy version of what this would look like. But, I mean, if we're gonna spend that much money, you'd want it to look good.
I think we're two million short. With two point five, I'm just, that's a hunch. Versus what you're gonna get for what the community expects.
I mean, yeah, I would love to see it, but, I mean, it's just like you said, you can put in the track and the field, but you can't address the bathrooms, you can't address the concession stand, you can't address-
Wait room.
Wait room.
Slash locker room, whatever you want to call it.
So then there you are.
I mean, Jason brought up a point at the end, that no, we don't have a full-time grant writer, there are, like, we're attending the Warrensburg School Foundation. Sedalia has a school foundation. If you had enough community people that wanted a foundation that raised money, I mean, they went to us, we gave them thirty-five hundred dollars for the foundation auction. And that goes right into classrooms. I don't know how a foundation gets created, but I mean, obviously, you're not gonna run around town to people you think might have money, and say, can you give us a hundred grand? That, it doesn't work like that, it's a foundation with auctions and a lot of mechanisms making it work.
Right.
It's a big-
A lot of big business that gets involved, when I was in Springfield, we had a foundation, they wrote us a check for a hundred grand one time, didn't even blink.
Yeah, we don't have that amount of business. Now, we do have some businesses, but, you know, but we're not gonna have a-
You have to remember, a lot of our vocational groups, a lot of our clubs, a lot of our, um, teams are actively soliciting funds on a regular basis, and make pretty good money.
It would be worth, like, I don't know.
Our foundation's kinda running through all the activities that we have, and vocationals.
If, if there is some sort of mechanism, or something that some schools are doing to put that in place, to where people can donate, it'd be worth exploring some, I mean, like, my hometown, their football field was paid by their boosters.
Yeah.
Turf.
Yeah, California has a great alumni association that buys things for the schools.
Yeah, insignificant things.
I just wonder, I mean, I, I get that we, we solicit businesses, but I wonder if, you know, the idea of, like, if someone maybe would be willing to give money, but doesn't really know how to do that, or if, if there was some sort of way for them to, to do that easier, if that would-
And they don't wanna be known, but some people don't want you to know that they gave ten, twenty thousand. The foundation allows that to happen, and, you know, Sedalia School Foundation, I mean, it's huge. Thousands of dollars it generates.
But I'm not opposed to-
Not that we can do that, but it might be something to work toward.
I'm not opposed to naming things, it could be the Clint Miller Mid's restroom. You know, and-
Yeah, incredible urinal. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
A large portion of California's was paid for by a family. I can't, it was, I can't think of his name, but they named it after him. No, it wasn't-
No, it was, it was before-
Yeah, rightly.
Before that, yeah.
And then they tried to change the name, Mark Hampton, but the thing, tried to change the name to Lavery, but it didn't go over.
I mean, the idea is, naming stuff is, is, seems like a good one, I mean, it's done all the time. I remember when Bill Lorry had Paige's name on the Mizzou sports complex, unfortunately got busted for plagiarism at UCLA, so.
One of the issues happens is that person gives a lot at one time, and then they move on, they die, whatever. And then fifty years later, you're like, why is it still called that?
They had a lot of spots like that.
Cause they, you know, a person, twenty other people have given ten times that by now.
I think that maybe there's some ways-
The foundation protects that, I think.
Yeah, or you could, I mean, that would be a conversation, I think, with whoever's donating money, you know, what do you want, what do you foresee this to be in the future? After so many years, would, how would you feel about us moving this, or changing it around, I don't know.
And it's a board, you know, you have a board for that, that's not just, well, Dr. Rob's idea.
Yeah, they're, I'm pretty sure that they're all-
Point million study.
Yeah.
Twenty-five, they're separate. It's, you know, now we're adding another name, or whatever. I don't, that's big picture thinking. So, what do we need to, we need to talk, I mean-
There was a discussion, there's no motion on wanting to move on it, we just move on to the next one, guys, any motions on that, what you wanna do?
I would be in favor of paying the money to have them draw plans.
Is that a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to do that, we can vote on that, um. I understand, I, I, I have some real concerns about us being uncool at all, but it seems like there's enough support to, um, do some due diligence.
So we've got a motion by both. Do we have a second?
I was almost afraid that if we don't, everybody that showed up here tonight is gonna be upset, cause we wanna know what's going on. So I'll make a second.
Alright, we got a motion by both, seconded by Stephanie. All in favor? One, two, three, passes four two.
Pass.
And I was a no, and Clint was a no.
Yeah, that's right.
Moving on.
Okay, amended budget, uh, I'll kinda give you that budget message, give any feedback if you ever wanna know anything, or something included in that message. Um, amended budget is the big spreadsheet that you have there, something that will make your eyes bug out, it made mine bug out the last few months, since I plugged all our P plan and our expected expenses, um, visiting with our administrators on their needs and teachers. Um, I just recommend that, uh, we go ahead and accept a motion to approve our amended budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
I'll move to approve the budget.
Motion by Clint.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Reed, all in favor, six oh.
Alright.
Alright.
Boza.
The motion is moved to executive session pursuant to six one zero point two, uh, zero two one, discuss point three.
Perfect. Do you need anyone?
Love to.
Dr. Rob.
Um, no.
So, a motion by Bo.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Reed, Bo.
Yes.
Ms. Reed.
Yes.
Ashley.
Yes.
Clint.
Yes.
Stephanie.
Yes.
Myself, yes, six oh.